Participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
At this time, the council members who have called in should unmute themselves.
Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for May 14, 2020, to order at 7:00 p.m. On roll call, council members, Fasolo.
Here.
Golubek.
Here.
Engwee.
Here.
Councilwoman Pellegrin.
Here.
Wetchler.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Lorraine, was Doris on?
She was on.
Wetchler is absent for the moment. Council President Balistrari absent. Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Even though the dais is becoming more filled, we are actually all here with the exception of one, and we'll check on that person very shortly. They might have a difficult time of getting on the phone line, but this government's been functioning and functioning very well. And once again, welcome to our work meeting on May 14th, where as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being videotaped and will be available on the borough's website at www.elwoodparknj.us.
Please note that due to precautionary measures to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, we have a conference call set up for the public to call as a means of participating in tonight's meeting. For the public's information and record, the public's lines will be muted except for when we open the meeting up for the public hearings. We thank you in advance for your patience during the operation of tonight's meeting.
Luckily, you're so close. With that said, I'd like a motion to open it to the public.
So moved.
We did a pledge of allegiance last week, didn't we, now?
Yes. Yeah, but that was a...
It was a special meeting.
Special meeting.
When I was mayor, we always...
Would you like... No.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Okay.
I thought that.
All right. Engwee, first, second, Golubek. There you go.
Okay, Daniel, that's the last time we're going to ask you to speak this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I am going to unmute the public lines.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time? No one would like to speak?
If no one cares to speak from the public, going once, going twice, going three times, I'd like a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
All in favor?
At this time, the council members will have to unmute themselves. Do we have Councilwoman Wetchler on the line yet?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. So for the record, Councilwomen Pellegrin and Wetchler are participating by means of Okay, moving on to the first item on our agenda, under correspondence, we have a public notice from the Burton County Department of Public Works regarding mosquito control. Okay, now moving on to two resolutions. The first item on the agenda is our corrective action plan for our 2020 audit, and here with us this evening is our CFO, Mr. Roy Rigatano, to go over the corrective action plan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The law requires... Good evening, everyone. The law requires that I appear before the council to discuss the audit and the corrective action plan. The corrective action plan already has been implemented by the BA and myself, and it began on May 1st. The audit findings was a clean audit. It's probably the sixth audit in a row. There was no financial impact on any audit findings. The law requires me to give you a brief overview. So for the corrective action findings, a second signature needed to be put on checks specifically for the health revenue account and municipal court account. That already has been corrected. Almost every, if not all, of the audit findings have been satisfied, but I have to present it to the council. All outstanding checks over 180 days have to be voided by resolution. The municipal court change fund should be authorized by resolution, and the fire prevention accounts inclusive fire prevention dedicated penalty account for proper usage or has been For the finance department, goods and service prior to appeal was not done. Again, that's a very difficult, especially in these trying times, to do, but we're working on that. Competitive quotes for obtaining purchases in excessive quote threshold has to be required. We missed one or two of the vendors. We fixed that as well. We also now are in agreement with the tax titling premiums and the redemption account. Let's see what else. We've already fixed the federal equitable sharing account as well, and when I say fix, what we're doing is reconciling the computer systems to the bank system. And finally, all professional service contracts being awarded via resolution and in accordance with a pay-to-play, we also have to put on the actual dollar value of that contract, which Erin and I are doing for next year, so that's done. The professional contracts have to be awarded by resolution. The contracts have to be supported by a proposal, and we do all that, but we have to be a little more detailed, which Erin is well up on, and so am I. That is your corrective action. It was as clean as could be. If you notice, no dollar values were involved here, and I couldn't be more prouder of all of the departments, and bravo.
Roy, how would you rate this audit with previous audits?
They're all basically the same. Probably top, top, one of your top audits, especially because it was the first year after the computer hack that we were able to get back on stream. The year before, we virtually had to reconstruct all of the financials, including all of Erin's work, the... Not the court, the court is on a different system. So it was quite a task to do. So this was the first year that was quote-unquote "clean," back to normal.
Very good. Any comments from the council?
Well, to thank Roy and everybody that worked on it very well, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. One question, hold on one second.
It's next on the agenda, yes. And just for the Mayor and council's benefit, I do need to put the acceptance of the correction act, corrective action plan on a resolution, so I'll do that for next week's meeting, and then I'll also publish it in the newspaper, because that's required on my end as well. Next on the agenda is...
Sorry.
No problem. Is 2B, which is authorized estimated tax bills. This was on the agenda last week and also here this evening. Roy will be discussing that for everyone's benefit.
So local finance notice, which is the notices you all get to read through Department of Community Affairs Division Local Services, Local Finance Notice 20-07. What that basically says is because of the coronavirus itself, the revenues for the state are in limbo. So by being in limbo, they don't know when they're going to adopt their state budget, and rightfully so. However, the municipalities of New Jersey still need to continue to operate and to supply funds for the police, fire, and all other departments. So I've done this one time in my career. I'm doing it in all towns that I serve, which is an estimated tax bill. And what that does is allow the tax office to, early June, send out estimated tax bills for the third quarter. What that will do is keep cash flow in check so that we can go to at least August 1st, God willing, with the virus at hand, and keep the borough functioning fiscally. The estimated bills are estimated, however, four out of the five dollar values are to the penny. The only one I couldn't give you the exact dollar value was the county taxes. And the reason for that is because the county also is like the state, waiting and seeing how this virus proceeds as far as the detrimental effects on their revenue stream as well. So I need support here. It's a resolution, and what it basically will do is allow us to send out the third quarter bill. Any questions, please?
Good. I have a question. The estimated tax bill we get once a year, correct?
No, this is the first we're doing this, Mayor.
Never before did we...
Not here since I'm here.
Okay. All right, now with that said, is that because, obviously, the virus and its effects on the total state, county, and down to the municipality?
Yes. So what happens is because the treasurer announced yesterday that the state revenues are 60% behind, they can't go forward with their state budget. Now, it's their state budget that we wait for June 30th, July 1st, every year, and once the state passes their budget, then the state aid numbers are released, which we have been doing for the last six to seven years perhaps, or even longer, where we're using the same value year after year after year. And that's the consolidated municipal tax program relief and the energy receipts program. So for Elmwood Park, it's in a tune of about $2 million. Because of the coronavirus itself, the state cannot, and rightfully so, do their budget by June 30th. So the Senate already has approved, that will be delayed a period of time. That delay is why we can't adopt or do our tax rates permanently until the state does theirs, does their rate, and then send it to the Burton County Board of Taxation.
Is this being mandated by the state?
It's not mandated. I want to make sure I make it very clear. It is strongly suggested as per the local finance notice. Our association, both tax and the GFPA, Government Finance Officers Association, all highly recommend we do this. For Elmwood Park, you must do it because of our cash flow.
Cash flow. And this would be all based off of the virus, once again?
It's completely because of the virus, no other reason.
Hence, the cost of the mailing maybe can be put on that list that goes to FEMA.
So we have a meeting tomorrow, virtual meeting, Roy and I, one of my OEM coordinators, and myself, and a county from his office, on how to apply for the funding. You give us a tutorial on it, so we'll be able to ask questions then.
And any extra costs too? At least we could send it down, see what happens.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Roy.
Any else for Roy? Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, just turning off your microphone.
8:45.
Thank you.
Right? Right? 8:45.
Okay, so I'll proceed with putting that on the agenda for resolution next week. Moving on to C is Rosemont Park Playground Equipment Estimates. This is a follow-up from May 7th last week. Councilman Golubek had a few questions. I submitted those to Donna Pagliisi, our Recreation Director. She did confirm that this is including all-inclusive playground equipment, and then our borough administrator has more to add to that from the other questions.
Thank you, Erin. So one of the questions that I believe Councilman Golubek asked was to find out if we can do the removal portion of the project by utilizing our DPW. I spoke to our Public Works Superintendent, and they will be doing that, which will save the borough $7,000.
Very nice. Very nice, Daniel. My ears are ringing over here.
I have a joke. Put it all in my head. Good news, though, very good news. Thank you. Let me ask a question.
You're welcome.
Okay, 2D is also a follow-up from last week's meeting, May 7th, in regards to the fire department equipment requests. And then also to go along with that, 2E is a new fire department equipment request. I know that there was a fire committee meeting held before this, so I'm not sure who wants to start with this agenda item.
I'll start if that's okay, Mayor. The committee, Fire Committee and I, met with two of the fire chiefs, Chief Shavasta and Chief Bruce. We wanted to follow up with them regarding the requests, and what we outlined to them was going forward, any equipment requests, significant requests, not, and we're not talking about buying a set of fire gloves or a helmet, we're talking about, you know, bigger purchase items. I'd like them to send me an email outlining the need, identifying what the equipment actually is, and then I could present that to the council on their behalf. If it's something that's, needs more explanation, we could certainly invite one or both of them to the meeting to elaborate. The other thing we asked at the meeting was that they conduct an inventory of all their equipment, vehicles and all, put a year to those things when they were purchased, and estimated life expectancy, so we can refer to that going forward. I believe Councilwoman Engwee might have some more to add to this.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, it was a productive meeting with them, basically keeping us in the loop of what they need, how often they're going to need it, and things like that, conversations and more context. So when it does come to the council, we have something to read and better understand their needs. So I believe that we're all on the same page now, and we're going to get that inventory list and kind of have like a five-year plan on how often they'll need this equipment. We expressed to them that we will not hold them to that plan, like we do understand that things happen and things break, but at least we have an idea of what they have in-house. Makes our job a little easier here.
Yeah, it's efficient.
Okay, so for right now, then, we are holding off on putting any new resolutions on the agenda? Or are we moving forward with these requests?
I think we should wait on the inventory.
Okay, so we'll be holding off on 2D and 2E?
Yeah, we're going to wait till they give us the updated list and a little bit better explanation in writing, and then we'll be able to move forward once we...
Okay.
If by some chance that occurs in the very near future, then it's something we can consider over email, but that's, the ball's in their court, I would say.
It would have to be received by Monday, so that's probably very unlikely.
I was just going to ask you, Erin, if there's...
No, no point.
Okay. If they get us, can I just ask a question? If there is a few line items that they can get us that information by Monday, would we be able to then put that on Thursday's agenda?
As long as you are all okay with it.
I mean, I don't expect them to have a full inventory by then, but if they can maybe get us some of the information that we were looking for, I don't want to...
Just let me know. Just let me know, and as long as I have it by the end of the day, Monday, because I finalize everything by Tuesday morning.
Not to undermine what you were saying, Chief, but any items that have been previously okayed, like the pumper and its equipment that they need, we don't want to hold that up, can that be segregated out so that we can move forward on it?
Yeah, this is independent of that.
Oh, it is?
These are new requests.
Okay.
The previously approved requests are not being held up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, 2F is a request from our fire official for the increase in hourly wage for one of our fire inspectors, which is up to par and consistent with, you know, standard protocol for our other fire inspectors once they finish their 90-day probationary period.
So is this typical of a step, basically?
Exactly. 2G is a tax department request to refund overpayment. Any questions? Okay, 2H, we don't necessarily know what will become of our summer camp this year, but just in case we do have a summer camp, our Recreation Director wanted to have our summer camp employees in place, just so that none of that is held up when the time comes. So this is a list of names.
I had a question real quick on that. For the counselors, do they all get paid the same, or is it... Because I know, like, some of them get like $200 more, $300 more. Is it by year?
I think they're different rates.
No, I'm saying, I know that it's there, but some of them make like $200, $300 more. Is it like by seniority?
I think it's different rates for the years that they've been there.
Okay.
I believe that's how...
All right, I was just curious.
I think there are also senior counselors and, like, teacher counselors that do make a bit more, like more of a supervisory type role.
All right.
Right. The fact that their resume is deeper, such as a teacher, nothing like getting a counselor who's also a teacher. So, and that would be part of the discrepancy that, in the wages.
Just logistical question. If we do a resolution appointing all these people to positions, come whatever, June 15th, June 30th, we just tell them there's no camp this year, and like, we don't have to undo anything? Are we...
I would ask Mr. Ingraffia, I think the resolution should say, provided that we have a camp.
Yeah.
It could be made contingent upon a review of the condition of being able to run the program.
So we'll add that language, just, okay. That's, yeah, that was pretty much my question.
On the resolution.
Will do, no problem.
Condition upon the program being available and financially sound to run.
Yes. Any other questions? 2I is a resolution for a Safe and Secure Grant within the Police Department that's done on a yearly basis.
Chief, this is consistent year to year, or has this changed? Sorry, Mayor, I think you were pointing to the chief.
No, go ahead. I'll answer your question, go ahead.
I asked.
Yes. So this grant has been around ever since I've been a police officer here, 31 years. It's Safe and Secure Grant. We get $60,000 from the State of New Jersey to offset a police officer's salary.
What I like about this, Chief, is the fact that it is annual. I remember years back, they would send out a grant to hire three police officers, and they would cover their salary for three years, and then it ended. Kind of like tantalizing you to put the men on, and then the burden of paying them afterwards after the three years was the towns. But this is, doesn't seem like that, and it just seems like a very good grant.
Yes, it's an excellent grant, and we get it every year, and it's, you know, it pays for more than a new officer, more than what a new officer would make, so, by at least $20,000.
Okay.
Okay, great. And the last item I have under resolutions is 2J, our vacation buybacks that we have from three personnel from the DPW department. Any questions? Okay, moving on to item number three, which is an application we have from the Elmwood Park Football Bombers, their annual calendar raffle, and this should not be affected as a result of the pandemic. It is scheduled for the fall, and it's something that they can do with minimal interaction.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Okay, great. Moving on to item number four, departmental reports. The first one is our March 2020 Fire Prevention Bureau report. May I accept and file? Okay. B is the April 2020 Building Department Report, which was also sent via email. Force...
Can I make a comment on 4B? And this is something I mentioned to the chief recently. Building Department, Police Department, Fire Department, they log everything they do, they log every call they go to. I would like to request that you explore whether a similar system or something different for the DPW, logging what they respond to, what the outcome was, what the complaint from residents was. I think we're moving in the right direction on this, and I don't see why we wouldn't do it in that department.
Sure, absolutely.
So when you spoke to me about that, I spoke to Tony, the construction official, and I had him link up with Scott, and he is showing Scott how to use the system, and Scott was receptive. So I think you're going to see this brought on by the DPW in the near future.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, 4C is the April 2020 Municipal Court Report. And then lastly, under departmental reports is 4D, which is the finance report for the year through April 30th, 2020, under, for all of our departments. It's not itemized, but more so just the general categories for each department. Any questions? Okay, Mayor, that's all I have on my agenda this evening.
Thank you, Erin. Regarding council reports and the mayor's reports, we've been suspending them, but being that we do have council people here tonight, I'm going to ask them if they care to speak about anything, and if not, we'll just move along. Mr. Fasolo, is there anything on your mind you'd like to talk about?
Just in regards to the Board of Education, hopefully we could move forward in doing some graduation ceremony for the class of 2020. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. Mrs. Engwee?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I just piggyback on Mr. Fasolo. I am hoping that with the new executive orders and things, that we can move on with some type of graduation for these kids. Working in school, this is like a hype time of year for us, proms, graduations, and all of the fun stuff happens between spring break and June, and my heart has been going out to all the kids who were supposed to have such a special year. So I'm hoping that if we can do something, anything would be great, and in lieu of, you know, these graduations. If not, when we do open up, I would like to present, like, as a town, us doing something for the 2020 graduates, whether it be a little ticker-tick, something. They definitely should be recognized, as we know. It's easy to say as an adult, it's not a big deal, but when you're in the position of a 17-year-old girl, missing prom is huge. So I think that we need to, you know, get in our, what we're going to do for them once this is all over.
You know, you just brought to mind, Denise, that, and this is probably a major undertaking, but maybe next year, they can do the two years, bring the kids back from this year, and give them their just due. That might be over the top in terms of organization of it, but it's just a thought that you might want to pass on, or we might want to pass on. Because like you said, I know my grandfather, my grandson, he's going to miss out on graduating grammar school, and he was devastated he didn't go on his field trip. Now, to us, we're saying, well, no big deal, but to them, like you're saying, it's devastating. So maybe we could make it up.
And I know that high school has some plans, but being, working in the middle school, again, the eighth graders, like you said, with your grandson, it's a big deal, and they missed out on a lot, and I feel, I really do feel for them.
Yes. So I've been in constant communication with Principal Warner and Superintendent Iacetti regarding the ceremonies. We had plans to have a meeting to do a caravan-type graduation, and then the governor said that that's not going to be permissible. We were ready to move on that if he allows it, so whatever it takes from the Police Department side, we're ready to move and assist the school system with anything they need, so we're ready to go.
Mike, did you hear anything about the restrictions being lifted in terms of Memorial Day? I heard, and once again, just from the television, the governor speaking, that the beaches are going to be opened, but no rides on the boardwalk and stuff like that. Anything outside, he's starting to release and allow to happen. Did you hear anything in reference to Memorial Day, today, I guess today?
I haven't, and I like to wait until he puts pen to paper, because a lot of times, what he says on TV doesn't get translated the same on paper, or there's some other caveat that he didn't mention. So once, once the order is issued, then we can, we can vet it, and we can, you know, if we need to get our lawyers involved too, we can, we can make sure that we're reading it properly.
Okay. Daniel?
Progress.
Okay, it leaves me. All right, we need a feel-good moment here. And I... Okay, it leaves me. All right, we need a feel-good moment here. And I think I just used it up by saying that the governor possibly, possibly, and I hate to pass on information that is not for sure, but the beaches are opening. So what that's telling us, I think we're at the end of the beginning, and the beginning of the end is in sight. I think that's, that's good news for us all. And Chief, share this with, I know you don't like to talk about something till it's stable, but the conversation we have with Donna today of possibly doing something, just share that with us.
So we had a Zoom meeting today with our JIF for our quarterly safety meeting. And after the meeting, my phone rang, and it was the rec director who we were just on the Zoom meeting with. And she said that she wanted to talk to the mayor and I about how we would feel about, there's a, there's a company out there in South Jersey that does pop-up drive-ins for the community, like a drive-in movie theater. They come and set everything up. And as she started to say that, I said, let me stop you right there. And I think she thought I was going to say, absolutely not. And I said, I wholeheartedly would support that, and if I had the mayor's money, I would invest in a drive-in, because I think that's the wave of the future. So, so I, I linked her up with my traffic division, my community policing division, and they are exploring locations in town where we think we could host a drive-in. So it's a work in progress, but it's, it looks promising.
It's good. It's, it's, it's a good feeling moment, whether it comes to fruition or not. We will, if we're allowed to do something like that and it works out, we will do it. But I think we need stuff like that going forward. All right, no one else has anything to say with that? I'd like to close and open to the public on their, anyone who cares to speak.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye. First by Engle, second by Fasolo. At this time, I'm going to unmute the lines for anyone from the public wishing to speak.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time?
Jeffrey Freitag, 35 Hillman Drive. Good evening. Just one question. On that, hello?
Yes, Jeff.
We're with you, Jeff.
Okay. Okay, on the thing you put, that red, white, and blue thing that tells the ti, rather, not the time, it has the meeting time and everything on it, and it has the access code and phone number.
Yes.
You have on every one of them that the meetings are videotaped. They're not, I mean, most of them aren't videotaped, correct?
They are videotaped. The only way for me to record us in the council chambers is through videotape. So right now, we are being videotaped, and I sent it to the gentleman who runs our website for them to be uploaded, because I cannot upload videos myself. So they're just going to be a little bit delayed for that reason.
Okay. Yeah, because I know, like, last week you had both the, so all the meetings are going to be videotaped now?
They have been videotaped, because like I said, we're in the council chambers. And that's the only way for us to record in here, because the sound system is, you know, linked to, to the video and so on and so forth. It's just a longer process, because like I said, I can't upload the video. I have to send it through Dropbox to him, and then he has to go onto our website and upload them. So they're all just going to be a little bit delayed.
Okay, just one other question, and this is it.
No, Mr. Freitag, June 2nd, they would be, they would be considered late.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
That was in unison.
Yeah. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
This is Dominic. One second, please.
Okay.
I'm not sure if, if you could hear that on my phone. This is Dominic Scalzino, 128 54th Street. And I wondered if you could elaborate a little bit on the estimated tax bill. It sounds like there's, what is the number going to be? There's only one number that we're not sure about, and that's the, the county tax. Is that, is that what it is?
Dominic, unfortunately, our CFO has left us. We'll gladly write the question down, and you give us your phone number, and we will follow up with an answer.
Mayor, you must have some understanding of it. Could you just give us your understanding?
Once again, this is not my expertise, and I would rather refer to our CFO. So once again, give me your question, and we'll make sure that we get back to you with an answer. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scalzone, it's Chief Hligno. Can you send me an email, sir, and outlining your question, and I'll get the answer for you tomorrow?
Yes, will do. And thank you for your assistance with that problem. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? Going once, twice, three times?
Jeffrey Freitag, 35 Hillman, for some reason, over your phone lines, it's coming with police. They're talking about some sort of domestic dispute or something.
It's someone that's on the line that doesn't have their line muted, and they must have their own personal scanner on.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Al, for that.
No problem, Mr. Freitag.
Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? If not, we'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to go into executive?
Participants can unmute themselves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get the?
Aye.
I did, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. Where is the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances? And where is the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist? And where is the governing body wishes to discuss litigation and legal reports? Minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask that everyone from the public, please hang up their lines. I will be able to tell who is on the line. So please hang up so that we could enter an executive session immediately following.
Erin, do you need me to call back or just stay on?
No, that's okay. You can stay on the line.
Okay, on the line?